For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
All right, good evening. Welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, July 17, 2017. All you want to please?
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, modifications to the agenda. I believe there's one. We're taking, we'll find out from Rich in a moment, some more details about it, but we're going to take the bids for the dog fence off of Report of Officers. So moved.
Second.
Sorry, Kim.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yep.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other modifications? Approval of the minutes from regular session of July 3, 2017, and closed session of July 3, 2017. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting you're allowed to address your concerns to council. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our record.
Yes, sir. Rich Solinger, City Engineer. Yes, the dog park, the evening planned tonight, we, this morning, we were notified of a catastrophic failure of the sidewalk and walkway along our front park, along the shoreline. Wooden cantilevered platform, the back foundation wall had been undermined and had settled about two feet. To be able to do any type of corrective action is right. We would have to be working right where the dog park would be installed. So right now, I've had a contractor in there, they pulled the concrete out. We're looking at getting it opened up so we can figure out what corrective action plan we need to do, then come up with a proposal, get it out there, and get it corrected. Late fall is the best scenario. It may even be spring. We might try to get it put up this fall, though. We do think it's going to put a delay in that process. Obviously, this is not something we anticipated, not in the budget. We'll have to come back to council with funding options for it in the future, but it's not going to be an inexpensive project to get corrected because we probably lost about 70% of that walkway. It's still intact, but you don't want to walk out.
Well, thanks for the update.
We did issue a press release when out this afternoon, basically closing the park indefinitely other than the parking lot and boat launch. The rest of the park, I assume, if we haven't, we will be cordoning off the entire rest of the park to keep people out because there will be equipment in there and the like. And I also authorized Rich to begin removing the, I call composite, whatever that means. Yeah, the decking there off because it did warp a bit when that settled, and to get it off, we'll see if we can salvage it. Basically, I'm screwing it because if we can't salvage it, that's going to add tremendously to the cost.
No, we actually had a couple of different contractors over there. One of them, we asked Pat Britton to come over and just take a look at it and give us his thoughts. He suggested getting the decking off ASAP. It's still warm enough, it would probably heal itself, and we would be able to reuse that decking itself.
One thing I asked is that they number them from one end to the other, so while we take all, all goes back in the same order.
That's wasn't the way to start a month, eh?
No. And just for clarity, for the time being, the parking lot and the boat launch are still open?
Yes. Parking lot will be open, and so will the boat launch with Brown Trap Festival. I'm sure it's going to be a lot of use, so those will be in.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Hello, good evening. My name is Stephen Worth. Thank you, Mayor and members of council, for allowing me to speak tonight. I own the building at 107 Second Avenue, the downtown Alpena, right next to the Center Building. I would like to provide my support for the revised plan to change Second Avenue between River Street and Chisen Street to, from a one-way to a two-way. This new plan not only retains parking on both sides of the street, but increases the count by three, which is a much-needed addition to the downtown. As some of you know, I have been very much opposed to the change two-way because the original plan called for removal of parking from one side of the street. This parking is desperately needed by businesses and the residents in the downtown area, and many have been very vocal about potential locks. I appreciate the DDA and the city staff and the mayor that took the time to discuss the possible changes that we came up with and to work to make this meet the design criteria that the city has to work with them. While some of you may think the plan isn't ideal because of the narrow width of the street, I believe the revision is a great compromise and will have the added benefit of slowing traffic along Second Avenue to provide a safer environment for pedestrians. It is also my opinion that once the novelty of the change wears off, most of the people traveling over the Second Avenue Bridge will continue to use Carter or Park if they're traveling north or south, leaving the majority of the traffic that travels towards the bridge as it is now. I cannot speak for the other downtown residents individually, but I can say that there were many happy faces when I discussed the change with them, and most of them were very happy that the parking was going to be kept. So I'm very optimistic that this will be a win for the city. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, tonight's council... Oh, okay, please.
Just something simple. I don't know if I have any to come to the standard.
Please do. Name and address for our record.
My name is Amy True. My address is 1322 Fox Farm, and I frequent the downtown lot, the businesses, and it's just, I don't like congested streets, and I'm grateful that presently the section of Second Avenue is not a two-way. Most big cities have one-way streets, and we have so few of them, and I'm so grateful that we have so few of them. And just, I guess I haven't seen the plans, but just imagining the two-way traffic and then parking both sides is so congested, and I would really hate to have that happen to be so congested. And I just think that could cause some traffic issues, some accidents, because, I don't know, I just like it as a one-way. Maybe it's resistance to change, but I'll be glad to look at the plans, you know? I just kind of wanted to register that I really like it the way it is, and that's all.
Mia, can you state your last name, spell your name, please?
T-R-U-T-H.
T-R-U-T-H?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Lawyers have trouble spelling.
Pick nothing. Anyone else?
My name is Albert Hess. I have a business at 102 North Second Avenue. I'm one of the happy people that Stephen referred to downtown ahead of the business. I think it's a great plan, the proposed one that I've seen, the parking on both sides, two-way traffic, I think it can be done. I agree with him that I think most of your traffic is traveling daily, and will continue to go down around rather than drive through the downtown. And I think it'll be good for, you know, people coming to Alpena. It'll take the confusion away, the one-way that people were concerned about earlier. And also, you know, they're concerned about the driving lane maybe being a little bit narrow. I think they're only a foot narrower than most state roads that are 12-foot. So it's not that much of an issue. Footage-wise, the parking is still going to be seven-foot on each side of the car, which is average width. So I think it's a good idea, the proposal, it's a good change, you know, compromise for what we were looking at before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay. Thank you all. Next up on the consent agenda, A, are bills to be allowed in the amount of $321,049.97; B is a budget amendment carryover $5,000 from 2016-17 to 2017-18 for a shed at the Marina; C is a budget amendment carryover of $15,000 from 1617 to 1718 for pedestrian lighting; D is a budget amendment carryover $265,530 from major streets; and $7,365 from cemetery; and $146,900 from sewer; and $15,000 from water from 2016-17 to 2017-18 for unfinished capital projects; is the Michigan Municipal League 2017 election of workers' compensation fund trustees; and F is the Thunder Bay River Costume Run Walk 2017.
All right, Mia, we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yep.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, we skip down to Report of Officers. A is City Treasurer's Quarterly Financial Report, April 1, 2017 to June 30, 2017.
I'm going to mainly be talking on the financial summary on the right side, the revenue and expenditures. This is our fourth and final quarter for our fiscal year. There's a lot of work yet to be done on it, but, so these numbers are not final. However, this will give us an idea where we're at right now. The financial summary report on the right box, you notice the revenue is pretty good except you see that the second line, general fund, only says 57.86% of revenue, and that's because of a federal grant of about $770,000 we have not received yet. So that's really the main reason that we're below where we should be on the revenue. Way down under lights, it's 211%, and that's only because we got reimbursed for some lights that got hit. You know, we didn't budget for something like that, but we got the money in. It's not a large amount, but it still put us, it's a good thing, but it put us way over the budget there. As far as expenses, if you'll see down below our departments, some were a little bit above 100%, and some were a little below, ended up at about 97.89%. So that was very close to budget, that's a good thing. We projected $3.34 million of the fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, which was about 30.6%. If we receive the federal grant money in this fiscal year, what's going to happen is we'll accrue it to 1617, it'll go back. Usually, we get 60 days on a large grant, we might get a little bit more time. If not, it'll go into next year, and then it will, it'll just be lower this year and higher next year. And I say this year, next year, 1617, 1718. So hopefully, we'll still get it in this year. If we don't receive it in time, like I just said, then it would be about $2.8 million or 26% to end 1617. But next year would be higher. So overall, I think we're going to end up pretty close to where we budgeted, except for the catastrophic sidewalk.
Sinking.
But that's 1718, so. Are there any questions on this?
Yes.
I think everything's been answered. No surprises that you...
Just that revenue, you know, was questionable, but we know why.
We just took surprise today, so.
Yes.
I have none. Receiving, huh? Anybody else? If not, a receiving file.
Yeah. I'm only receiving file.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Karen? Next up, communications and petitions. A is the Thunder Bay Art Council request location for placement of the Blue Heron sculpture. Koonline is a, join us?
Good evening, thank you. I'm Tim Koonline, Thunder Bay Arts Council. First of all, I'd like to apologize. Last night, we finished the 41st Art of the Bay, and we had a little incident, someone backed into one of the light poles in Bayview Park. But I have to say, the city was right there immediately, and we fixed the problem, corrected the problem for now, and we do apologize. There was a police report filed on that. And then we also finished off our season with a really successful event at the Big Tent for Brown Trap, which was nice to see, particularly after the last year. We had 503 people attending. I guess last year, there were only about 100, and there was some concern, but it was kind of a nice turn of events, so. I'm here this evening to ask for formal approval for the placement of the Departure sculpture in Duck Park. I've been in informal discussions with Greg and Rich about the location as we were proceeding with the commission of the artwork with Ann Gildner, and we've just kind of been operating on the assumption that that would be the location, unless we were directed otherwise. But we're finally at that point where the September unveiling of that sculpture looks very likely, as we planned. This has been in the works for, well, it'll be a year in September. And Greg and Rich suggested that I seek formal approval for that location. So I could go into a lot of detail. You've been given the presentation in advance, and there were lots of photos showing you the artwork in progress. This is about a $35,000 project, assuming it will be gifted to a city since it will be on city property. But let me see if I can pull the presentation up unless there are, case there are questions.
It's on there, Tim.
So the Departure of the Great Blue Herons, I'm sure you're all familiar with it. There's been a lot of publicity. This was commissioned by the Arts Council as part of its 45th anniversary year project. You may know that the Arts Council is responsible for commissioning the BiPath, the Bicentennial Path, otherwise known as the Alpena Sculptured Bike Way/Walkway project back in 1974, and that was two years prior to the 1976 Bicentennial. The Arts Council itself was established around that time, as were many throughout the country. This was a major national movement. The National Endowment for the Arts was created, and subsequently, local arts councils were created. Thunder Bay Arts Council is the oldest continuous arts council in the state of Michigan. One of the first projects was to commission the initial BiPath. You can see the image of their original report there at the bottom right-hand corner. It's obviously been extended many times, but, and it's a huge asset to our community. I know there are plans for additional extensions in the South Bay area, but what we're trying to wrestle with is the sculpture component of the BiPath during this 45th anniversary year, and we've got some traction. The Arts Council commissioned its piece first, and the college followed with a piece of its own, both of which will be located on the BiPath, both, well, in roughly the downtown area and the college campus. And the only sculpture that was created during the original project was the Sculptured Fountain, which is in front of Vessar Museum. It's a significant sculpture. It was $45,000 in 1976, and Gary Dowley did some investigating as we began this project, working with the Vessar Foundation, and it's valued at apparently around $150,000 today. So that was a huge investment with some huge legacy to the present day, and we hope that these future sculptures will translate in the same way. So you can see in the left image there at the bottom of the screen was the initial concept. We gave Ann Gildner of Sheboygan our idea and asked her to use our logo of shorebirds to create something that would have a lasting impression, a legacy for the Arts Council and an adhering asset to our community. She came up with three options, and we chose, as a council, we chose one with public input, and it is the Great Blue Heron, the pair of the Great Blue Heron flying off from a natural habitat. So what I'm really looking for again here is permission to locate the sculpture at Duck Park. And you can see through the presentation a number of images showing Ann Gildner at work. She did the initial maquette, which was a small-scale model that she would use to do the large-scale model, and she's well on her way with the large-scale model itself. This is just a photo of some of her previous work. She's done at archives in Grand Rapids, and she was exhibiting in Petoskey, large permanent sculptures, as well as Boine City. She's part of that, she actually helped create that rotating exhibit there at Boine City. We've kind of looked at Boine City and North Central Michigan College of Petoskey, which has over 100 sculptures, all financed by one donor, at the center of their campus. It's really beautiful if you haven't seen it. But we're kind of trying to use those and maybe even some of the artists of whom are Michigan-based to inspire at least five sculptures along the BiPath in addition to the one in front of the museum, the original. So this would be the second piece added to the collection, and then the college piece, which is titled Global Collaboration Awareness. You may have seen that in the paper some time ago, students designed it in the engineering program at the college, and Scott Stevens is welding the piece. That would be located in front of Vessar Technical Center also in September, so we'll have two unveiled in September. You can see, this is kind of what it'll look like. I'm not sure if you can see the reeds on a platform here. It'll be standing on a pedestal, a concrete pedestal, roughly five to six feet above ground, and then the statue itself will be on top of that. So it'll kind of be at eye level when you're driving. I'm 23 in front of the hospital, but when you're walking on the footpath, it'll be above you, and the birds are, we hope that the birds will be flying off northeast, in the northeast direction over the sanctuary. We had a lot of concern about the name Departure. It sounded negative, like we were leaving, too many people are leaving, but we, that was not the intent. Departure is suggesting that this is just the beginning of something. Alpena is clearly experiencing a renaissance in the arts, as are so many other communities, but clearly, arts and culture are part of our economic agenda, and this is just our way of making that statement. So you can see the backside of the birds flying. Each one of these birds will have, each wing is six feet, so the total sculpture will be 20 feet from the end of the base to the nose of one of the birds, 20 feet in diameter. The sculpture itself is constructed of raw steel, and the birds themselves will be burnished stainless steel. So you can see, she's sketching the actual scale of the final sculpture. This is all heavy, heavy equipment. She's working out of the center of Ananawee with...
Ryan. Jim Ryan.
Ryan.
Tom Ryan.
Tom Ryan.
Tom Ryan. And she's got quite a reputation. Mary Zinke is her assistant, so this is a team effort among them, the machines cutting the base, the feathers. There are literally hundreds of hand-cut feathers that are going to be welded together to construct these six-foot wings on each side of each bird, or two birds. Now, these are the lily pads that are at the base, and you can see in comparison to the maquette that she made, the maquette we had on display at our annual dinner at the Aplex. And you can see how she used that as a model then to construct the large actual sculpture itself, larger than life, to say the least. These are the maquette cattails, but you can see the actual cattails are as tall as Mary's in here, so. And you just see the individual feathers that are here, the construction, the assembly of the feathers before welding. So obviously, it's a pretty serious effort here, and I think the city will be proud to have this permanently located. So this is the location that we are suggesting. I dare say the sculpture was almost designed for this location, so I hope you say yes. If you say no, we'll figure something else out. So what we're talking about is far enough away from the new covered bridge, towards the Washington Street Bridge, kitty-corner from the old Big Boy, directly across from the second entrance to the hospital. It's kind of a, well, how do I say it, an area of the footpath that gets overlooked. Beautiful natural habitat. We're hoping that this will be a nice complement to that location. So we go right in the center of the space, flying northeast out over the sanctuary. Raised pretty much all of the funds so far. The concert Saturday evening helped significantly. The sculpture itself is $22,000, and the foundation we're learning will be about roughly half of that, if not a little more. And then we have to work on signage, and at some point in the future, we hope to have lighting, but we'll deal with that another time. So at the risk of going on too long, I have one more photo that she, Anna, just sent me today. This, I don't know if you can see this, but this is the bird. There's the bee, and the tail starts here, and you can see the, well, the wings aren't on, but this is a rod that will hold the bird suspended. And you can see that she's, Anna's a pretty short lady, but still, these are going to be rather significant structures, so. I'll just open this for questions if there are any, and leave it at that.
Only comment I'll make, the staff, you know, did meet with Tim, and we have no objection and support this location for the sculpture. It's going to be another nice addition with the glade in this as you come into town from the north. And very apropos for that location.
Do you have much indication on the lifespan of the sculpture?
Well, it should be indefinite, really, because it's made of steel. There will be some changes in the coloring and the texture, but specifically, no, it's just that it's intended to be a long-term structure.
Certainly agree with Greg. I mean, it's a perfect spot for it, and I think it's going to draw a lot of curb appeal. You should come into our community to see that and then see the bridge, and then, you know, I think your first thought's going to be, oh, what a cool little, you know, community. You know, I think people really have been drawn to the bridge, and this will just give them something else to...
And it's far enough away that it's not, I hope, distracting from the view of that structure in itself. And I know there are other plans in that park, and we were very conscious of not cluttering the estate, but it's also a central location on the BiPath to get more and more people to use the BiPath, not just for exercise, but for exposure to arts and culture, inspiration, and that sort of tie nature with arts and culture and recreation. And with the idea that there are going to be at least one other sculpture for sure in September, just down from the one at the museum on the college campus, and then we're in discussions with various groups about the remaining three proposed sculptures.
I know. You know, eventually, it could have a walking arts tour here, you know, it would be neat. Thank you.
And if, you know, when you think about the mural added by the art, a lot to the downtown pocket art, you know, sculpture comes in all forms, art comes in all forms, so there are so many other things that this is meant to complement.
This is cool.
Again, it's exciting stuff.
Formal, but it looks cool.
Looks good.
We may know that we, the city was part of seeking the National Endowment for the Arts grant in the amount of $75,000. It was a matching grant to find $75,000 locally, and we were notified that we did not get that grant, no surprise. This is a national competition, but we tried, and the city was very gracious in writing all the letters, the local organizations. There's been a lot of local support for this type of agenda, so it's kind of fun to see it be one more thing added to the list of things that have been happening around here by a variety of organizations.
Tim, I have to say how valuable the duck, the island and the duck park and the river is to that hospital and mostly to the patients. hospital, and mostly to the patients in the healing process, the calmness of that pace is amazing. And to have the sculpture right there, front and center, for the patients who are able to get to a window, who have a window in their room, is such an amazing thing to happen. And I'm so thankful for it, really grateful for that.
That's a good point. Thank you. You know, again, the mural of Hope There is another...
It's beautiful.
...waypoint that could be added to the potential art block of some sort.
I've been putting into the CIP for probably ten-plus years, public art, and always watching it get deleted. And so it's nice to see other groups stepping forward. The mural, this, hopefully, it will continue throughout the city, more and more our work, public art. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Unless there's any objections to the location, that's really all we're acting on tonight.
Yep. No objections.
No, no, go.
I move we approve the request from County Arts Council to place a sculpture at Duck Park.
Paul Gora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Next up is new business, mobile food vehicle sales in select city parks. I didn't ask, but it's Adam Paul, this occasion.
Thank you. Ronald and Angela Meven are requesting to operate a mobile food vehicle within some city parks. Their business is called Thirty-two Below Exerted Ice Cream. The truck is converted FedEx truck, and has been modified to serve the ice cream. They stated that they will receive an inspection from the VA Health Department next week. Passed out a copy of a photo of the truck. Over the last few years, there have been a number of requests from food vendors to operate within city parks. These include kayak rentals in Duck Park, as well as a mobile food vehicle which operated within select city parks in 2014. The vendors have utilized the agreement that was approved in 2014 to select which parks they will operate in. They have to pay the operating payment of $100 per month to operate in these parks, which is the same amount the city has requested from past vendors. Previous agreement with a mobile food vendor, including Language, that allowed either party to terminate the agreement within fifteen days' written notice. Staff would request Language is added to this agreement, as well as added to the attached agreement. So the initial handout they gave me did not include that language, but I did add that to the actual agreement that we drafted. Staff believes that limited operation of mobile food vehicles would be a benefit to many parks. These are... These vehicles would allow to serve people within the parks, but also bring additional people into the parks, as well as allow additional food options where previously none have been available. Staff would request that City Council approve the attached agreement, which included the additional language that either party can terminate the agreement within fifteen days' written notice. And they did submit their liability insurance as well, so we do have that in mind.
And that... And this is all in keeping with the ordinance that we worked on a couple of years ago?
That ordinance was actually never...
Oh, we didn't finish that?
This is something we've done a lot of as far as along with operating within city parks, so this is something we want... I pretty much stole the agreement verbatim, and it would just be appropriated. And we didn't have any trouble last time, because the truck was operating.
Same basic agreement Sylvester's had, right?
Correct.
And I might have missed it, but they have multiple parks in one truck, so is their vision, like, within a day to hit different parks?
Correct. So as long as the parks are open, they asked if they could just move around. I indicated that it would be a problem as long as they abide by the terms of the agreement, which includes now blocking parking areas as little as possible, stating unpaid areas, things of that nature.
Any other questions or issues?
No. Did you try any ice cream?
I haven't tried any ice cream.
That are relevant to the...
I haven't got the health...
There might be the objection.
That's important.
Yeah, let's stay relevant so we can get going now. This is... And we're... So I'll need action that we're going to approve the agreement. We'll be signing that from our...
Just out of curiosity, how will people know where... Which park, where it's going to be?
I'm assuming they'll do what the Sylvester's did and use Facebook or some sort of social media, but ultimately speaking, it's certainly their problem, make sure people are aware of that.
You just give me a kayak and paddle, 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 and I'll go there.
Could be.
Until you find it.
Time will be approved, the agreement with Thirty-two Below?
Second.
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Paul Gora?
Next up, downtown Second Avenue On Street Parking between Chisholm and River Street, which has the presentation for us.
As Steve did, Steve Worth had indicated, city staff was approached by individuals within the downtown requesting to reevaluate the potential for on-street parking along Second Avenue between Chisholm Street and River Street. Original design concept, my god, this is the existing at the top with twelve parking spaces. Original design that we had for the two-way system only allowed for parking on the south side of Second Avenue between Chisholm and River Street. When we were approached, they basically asked if there was any way that we could add on-street parking to both sides. And it's... The street width is thirty-six inch from the face of the curb to the face of the curb, so that's what we have to work with. Taking that, and after that meeting, Steve came back when in his office, I'm in my office. We both independently just kind of went through and looked at and evaluated it. And we looked at the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials manual, which is the bible that we have to design, or we design streets to. We reviewed the design standards, minimum criteria, and impact from implementing parking along both sides of this street section. To accommodate it would require the use of two eleven-foot lanes and a seven-foot wide parking stalls along both sides of the street. The standard lane width is twelve feet, and the standard parking stall width is eight feet. During our review, we found that the use of eleven-foot wide lane is permissible, not recommended, but is permissible for low-speed, medium-volume streets. This section of Second Avenue would fit within that category. This width scenario also falls within the Michigan Department of Transportation's uniform criteria for major streets as an existing major street. If you have an existing major street, you can accommodate parking on both sides with those eleven-foot lanes, and it is permissible within the uniform criteria for major streets. The attached drawing depicts the proposed parking revisions and accommodates three additional on-street parking stalls that is presently there, and nine more than the previous two-way street designed by City Council. This is the minimum allowed from our research while still meeting standards, and falls below the normal widths used by the city. We typically use a twelve-foot wide. So what we've... We'll try to zoom in here a little bit, and down here. We've incorporated the seven-foot parking stall, two eleven-foot lanes, and the seven-foot parking stall. Basically, typically, our parking stalls are eighty feet. And even then, nobody parks right up against the curb, so, I mean, they're using that fully. They're going to have to be more cognizant to try to get up against that curb line when they are parking. We do have certain standards that we have to meet. We cannot be any closer than thirty feet to a crosswalk, so that's our distances down at each end. And then we also eliminated this potential parking stall. Right now, somebody coming down First Avenue has the full width of the street to be able to maneuver, make that turn, and pull into the alley. With the oncoming traffic, they would not have that luxury, and therefore, will have to cut this corner, I'm just afraid of somebody clipping the front of that car if they were too close. Likewise, we moved this parking stall back, and it really didn't impact anything because we really couldn't get another parking space on that side as well. This was actually sent over to MDOT to look at, because they have... They're going to be laying out the traffic signals and what our... Doing the traffic signals, wondering what our layout was for traffic coming to that This will be a narrow street, narrow travel lane, but it does meet those minimum standards. I think Steve is... Steve Worth is correct in the fact that you will see traffic slow down. I think many people will feel uncomfortable and will slow down because of that as they maneuver through there. This is an option. The intent was to just present it to City Council tonight, get it out there, public, and take a look at it, if they have comments. And Greg and I talked, and we... Basically, the comments should be directed to the council members. So it's basically you make the decisions, but this is an option for them to look at. I have not... I have not heard any negative comment. I know that Steve had an article in the paper after the DDA meeting. Have not heard any comments, one way or the other, on this, so...
Yeah, we have sent it to our technical question, something about the design, finding the call you myself and Rich. If I can't answer, I'll obviously pass it on to Rich, but otherwise, send it on to you. This will give people, since we have three weeks between meetings, three weeks to be able to make those contacts, one way or the other, and then council will vote on it at that time. There will be a procedure that will need to be followed that Bill will address at that time in terms of reconsideration, and he will lead you through that, in terms of what you would have to do. And all it would impact is just this block. Everything else is staying as was originally adopted by council, but it will be for this one. It could be even delayed as long as the second meeting in August, since we're not looking to proceed until after Labor Day, but I would assume at this point it will probably be back on the agenda for actual, for council actual...
And I'll just point out real quick, I guess, just for the benefit of everyone that hasn't followed this, pretty much from the time we left our meeting last fall, Mike Mahler, president of the DDA, or chairman of the DDA Board, and I have met numerous times with business owners downtown, sometimes all together, sometimes just one or two or three at a time to... And we took a lot of notes, and I really appreciate business owners like Mr. Hess and Joanna Cooper and everyone else at Peterson for bearing with us and continuing the dialogue to get to a point. We made a lot of notes out of that initial large meeting as far as what are the concerns? What are the issues? And really kind of backed it off to the point where the vast majority of the issues weren't the fact that cars would be going in two direct, two different directions. The vast majority was the diners not having a buffer of a parking stall in front of them rather than moving traffic, losing parking spaces. Learned a lot about the fact that each one basically has a gold bar sitting on it, so to speak, and so it's very valuable to them. So when it, you know, and so it culminated all the way down to this, and I definitely appreciate staff for working with us and being a little bit uncomfortable about this. Everybody can be a little uncomfortable about this, but from my perspective, and we're obviously not going to take action, but from my perspective, we do want to keep in mind that this is one city block. This isn't the whole stretch. It doesn't go for very far. So definitely... And the other thing we learned was taking this time, so I would suggest printing this off and having it on you at all times, so when somebody asks, you know, exactly what are you doing? We're not doing reverse angle parking on Second Avenue. We're not doing all these other things that tend to come out of a meeting. This is exactly what the proposal is, and like Rich said, we'll go from there, but definitely not taking any action this evening. But it did get a lot of DDA support, not only from the DDA Board itself, but from the other business owners, so...
The only other thing is, of course, at the intersection of Chisholm, you have, where basically you can either turn left or right, and we only have one lane for that, and you do have oncoming traffic. How that impacts, you know, do we get extensive backup of traffic as a result of that or not? We don't know. And the decision was to leave it, to allow both initially, see how it works, because we could have a couple of options. One, for people who really want to turn left and go south, is that we direct them over to either at Carter Street or even at River Street, over to Third, where they would be able to make a much easier left turn at that light and because of no oncoming traffic and head south. Or they could even go to First. It's not the easiest of the stop signs, but a lot of cars do make that turn as well. So those options are there. The other is, if we find it really isn't working, then we can basically eliminate the left turn and basically make people go to either First or Third to make a left to go south, which a lot of people do already. Well, obviously, because they can't do it on Second, so they're used to going to Third Avenue if they're going to do that anyway, so that is something. We're just going to kind of wait and see how it develops with the traffic patterns, and then adjust accordingly.
I suspect, you know, maybe get some traffic backups originally. After sitting through those a couple of times, they'll seek to alter that route if they're planning on making that left.
And we could put signage up, like you say, when you cross the bridge, to say, "Southbound US 23, go right on the curb." If you're already on, we could even put it at River Street, same thing, just to direct the traffic off to that direction if you are going to go left, if we feel that that would be helpful. We'll see how it happens, how it actually operates.
Very good.
Well, I guess I'd beg to differ. I feel if council was listening to the downtown businesses, it would not be turning two ways. I think this is a good offering. I know a lot of downtown business owners see this as less rep to evil, that if it's going to be two ways anyway, at least we'll get our parking back. So I appreciate the parking and our ability to do that. I do think that the other concerns that exist are maybe worsened by this, that the safety concerns are probably expedited, the loss of the atmosphere that business owners appreciate down there is probably going to take another hit. It sounds like maybe we realize this might be a mess, and, you know, what I hear is, well, people will avoid it, which seems to be counterproductive. So, you know, I think the city is in a tough spot where council decided to do it, and I think for staff, this is a great compromise to say, hey, we can get you more parking. Even by looking at the picture, boy, it's going to be tight. And you're asking a lot, I think, to put in that small of a space, so...
I do want to... And that's... I can appreciate your perspective, but I want everybody to understand that we're not putting two-way, one-way decision back on... Back on that... Back on the agenda that's been voted on, and the majority has voted on that. So this is just a... It is a compromise. It's a very good word for it. With the business owners, they spoke with their individual issues, and so we've... So we've adjusted for them, and this is the proposal, so just so everyone's clear that we're not debating or discussing whether we're going to go one way or two-way. That's been... That was last fall, and that was voted on.
It's basically for one block, do we do this, or do we do what was originally approved?
That will be... That will be the action at our next meeting, that we bring this up to council, will be to stay with the current plan or to change the plan to this, not the one-way, two-way decision.
And just to clarify, the mayor's clarification, that decision can always be revisited if certain members of council bring it back up.
Absolutely. So in, you know, with perspective, what Sean was saying, it's like I will tell you I have a different perspective, you know, than you do, because I've driven on narrow streets through Pittsburgh. I've got a son going to school there, so I had the privilege of driving through there. They have a lot of one-ways that are, you know, all over the place, which are not fun to travel on. But their streets are just narrow in multiple places around the city because they sit between two mountain ranges. One thing I did absolutely... One thing I did absolutely agree with is that as the street does narrow and there is a sign that says "Narrow Street", the traffic had tendency to always slow down because you were closer. I never felt uncomfortable on any of those streets at all, because I had, you know, we were slow, we were going against, on, you know, opposing traffic. So I was comfortable in driving that and I am not a person that likes to drive in big cities. I think the parking on this particular one, you know, I, I looked at this and I know you all recall that right from the very beginning, any way that we can add additional parking, I think is gonna be a good thing and a good alternative for those that were, you know, their biggest fear was losing the parking in front of the businesses. So I think this is a very effective compromise and I do appreciate the work Greg and the mayor did as well, the city staff is reviewing this. So I think, and it's great to hear because both Steve and Al were at a meeting that I had and were giving me all of their perspectives of what they were, you know, opposed to. To hear them both speak in favor of this compromise, I think speaks volumes to council.
I, I tend to have a mixed feeling about all this and mixed idea about all this because we all are realizing the fact that this is going to decrease the safety of our downtown. It is, and everybody will admit that right out of the chute.
I don't know.
And, okay, okay. You, you say no, I believe it will.
And that's okay. I just didn't want you to speak for all of us.
I believe it will. And I said that to start, in, in my opinion. I had numerous phone calls about this, because I've been close to the phone lately. And my first thought is, is it worth one horrible accident where somebody is critically injured? Is this, is extra parking, and, and I'm really gonna get flack about this, but it's worth being, this, this should be said in public. Is every shopkeeper downtown parking where they are supposed to park? Do they park in front of their business for long periods of time, thereby eliminating a parking spot for people who want to shop downtown? I'm asking that question, is, are the shopkeepers doing everything that they can do? Those are just my thoughts and my questions. Now, at the end of it all, after we hear everything that needs to be said, maybe I'll change my mind. But some of the things I said should be said out loud and to everybody.
January, I just, this is a difficult thing for me. I didn't vote for the two-way conversion because a lot of these questions weren't answered at that time. I think if we could go back and do that, we'd have a better outcome. Apparently, we're not going back to do that, but... And I've gotten lots of phone calls on this too, and from older people who think this is a safety issue for them, for parking, they drive bigger vehicles. This is going to be a difficult decision for me because I stand with the business owners and I have from the very beginning. I've listened to them, I've heard them. This is a compromise that we're stuck with now, if we're gonna vote for this. That saddens me. And I want everyone to know, this is not a stand, this is something that we've decided. This, this board has decided what's going on in your downtown, not staff. Staff's trying to do everything they can do to make it the best they can, working with everybody. So if anybody has complaints for or against, please direct that at us. We are responsible for this. I applaud the people who have stuck with this, who have gotten it to this point. I know a lot of doors were closed in their face for a long time to get to this point. I applaud you. It's going to be a difficult decision for me because I don't think the two-way conversion is in the best interest of downtown. This is a compromise for the businesses, so, but I don't know if this is, I just don't know from a safety standpoint that this is the best thing to do. So for the next three weeks, I'll take any input that anybody has and, and consider it in my decision. So, you know, please talk, please talk. I did go to the DDA, Rich, went to the DDA meeting last week, last week. One of my concerns about this whole thing is what happens when it snows? Because you're taking a narrow passageway now and when the curb line builds up with snow, you're gonna push the cars that are parked into the lane of traffic if we don't keep that going. So in my opinion, that's an issue for the DDA to address. It's, it's their downtown, it's their issue, but I would like it addressed before, if we adopt this before winter comes. What are we gonna do about that? I don't want it, I don't want December, January, somebody going, what are we gonna do about this? We tend to do that a lot with snow removal in the downtown and this is a, this is a place we can't afford to do it. So I would like that addressed.
Rich, just a quick question. You said the roads thirty-six inch wide, is that, is that an average or is it pretty consistent?
No, it's consistent.
And the only thing I'll add, I guess, before we, before we close the topic, unless somebody has something else, is that when you get the calls about the safety, and we've probably all got that, I would encourage you to not just base your decision on someone's fear that it won't be any safer, to do, do your research and do our diligence as a, as a council. And exactly, is there, is there any statistics, which there are, as far as what is safer? Two-way traffic, one-way traffic? What it, where, where do, you know, where is the, which are safer? Because it'll, it makes a difference when you're talking to someone to point out directly studies that have been done by MDOT and, and on the federal level, that two-way traffic is safer than one-way traffic. But people still have a fear that, that one wa, that one way is safer and the studies show separately.
I would just like to add to that. I did my due diligence from the time that this was proposed. And by doing my due diligence and reading every single report, including the DDA's latest report, there were things we were supposed to take into consideration that some on this board did not do back then. And now we're addressing it now. These are the same concerns that I brought up before we voted on it and now we're trying to make a fix. I did my due diligence and I will do it again.
Just, well, Joel's here, right? I'm curious, Joel's opinion is, in that type of a space, as far as like opening a passenger door? You know, you're clearly opening that door and do oncoming traffic. Do you have any concerns or suggestions or perspective on what you would instruct people to do, I guess, other than look, you know?
Well, we talk about due diligence and really that's part of also does operating a vehicle. I mean, whether it's a side street with a bicycle passing by, yeah, you have to use proper care when you're operating a vehicle or exiting a vehicle. You know, this is the first I've really had a chance to look at the, at the street layout. I understand the concerns of all, but that's okay. But if I may backtrack, and I don't want to overhand orders here, but I mean, people ask about opinions and so forth. And I will say this, as far as, I'm not gonna pick on anybody in particular, but regarding the business owners, and I will, I will state this for the record, they are some of the most chronic offenders that we have in the downtown for parking. This has been a maddening situation because we would think that they would want these spots open for the, for the paying customers. But yet you can go down there and you will see on a daily basis the same vehicles parked in the spots down there and they are employees or the shop owners. I don't want to do a pop, it's been an ongoing problem, but that's just the bare facts, so. But regarding caution, yeah, you have to be careful when you're opening your door, whether it be a two-way street or two-way street, so you don't get taken off by a bike or a, or a passing vehicle. It's gonna be a narrow spot, no doubt about it, but I think it will slow down traffic, which is not a bad thing. And we'll see how it works out. I don't think anybody has a crystal ball for this, but...
Ultimately, what we said was, it's paint and sealer. I mean, if it, if it proved to be an unmitigated disaster, it can be changed in one way or another. If it works, then we leave it as it is. We've said that about the reverse angle parking, which seems to be working much better now. We will be getting to the point where we can get the last couple of signs up when they come in to where we'll be ticketing those who parked the wrong way. But we're seeing fewer and fewer. Probably the biggest offenders are here in our parking lot, but that's because we don't have any signage. And most people know the one-way signs, but, you know, that's minor and we'll get that corrected as well. So, I mean, change is always difficult and we'll see. It was difficult on Third. We still get the occasional people who pull into the opposing lane to make a left turn. Not very often, but once in a while, we see them parking the, next to the beauty salon there on Third, facing the wrong way and things. So that's still gonna happen, but it's changing. When you've done something for twenty, thirty years, whatever it's been, here, you change it. It's gonna take a while for people to get used to a new norm, so we'll just have to see.
Is it almost, is it a hundred percent just markings, these changes?
Well, it's sealed. We would have to seal it. Well, I mean, the, the traffic lights have already been approved. I mean, technically, if you went the one way, all you'd be doing is turning off the traffic signals that face the wrong way. We already have those lights up at River the correct way, they just not been activated on the one. So it'd be the same thing. So really, the other cause may be some signage, a little bit of signage, because it's gotta face the right way and everything. The parking signs on the one side have to switch and so forth, but it is. We seal it, we put the sealer over to cover up all the old markings and then we strike. So if you were gonna change, that's what you'd have to do again, reseal it and then we strike. So that's what you're looking at on, whoops, Carter was a little more because we changed some of the curb lines and stuff too up there at Third. But especially on River Street, that's, other than the signage we put in, it is all sealer and paint.
I'd be sure that people ask, that this change doesn't actually change any of the curb lines?
No, no, without changing any curb lines, you know, it does create those marked off spots, which are probably going to be used by people who want to drop something, you know, run into something real quick and they put their flashers or a delivery vehicle, things of this sort. Just like it's, the one is used now right there when you turn off of Chisholm on the second, right now. Those will actually now find them, with this. But they also are there in order to allow proper turns by vehicles, so.
Thank you.
Sean, I hope I answered your question a little bit.
Well, I think you can, really, so, yeah, that's fair enough. Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Thank you, Joel. And I didn't mean to come off as if, I, I clearly came off as if I was offending you, that you weren't reading the, sorry.
I read.
What I, I wasn't referring to the, to the consultants of the studies that we have done downtown. I was referring to just specific MDOT documents regarding safety. I've read different ones and, and clearly, if you have a document by a reputable department that says that two-way streets are more dangerous for pedestrians than one-way streets, I would appreciate you emailing it to me because I haven't read one yet. And that's fine. We can throw some traffic back and forth and, for what we find. If you find something, feel free to, to email that, those documents around a little bit. But otherwise, I think we'll close it unless anybody's got anything significant and then we'll be back on our agenda in a few weeks.
And just for the public, he really just put this out here so people knew and could comment and evaluate it, right?
It will be on our website tomorrow, and like I said, after the DDA meeting, it's special, it's G D P in the...
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Your honor, Mike.
Okay.
Adjourned, I adjourned to close session to discuss water sewer litigation and union negotiations.
Seven.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Folagora? Johnson?